Good evening, welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals meeting today, Thursday, February 27th. We're going to stand for the pledge of Mr. Clon and please lead us.
I would like to read this to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'd just like to point out that on February 5th, we had our Saratoga County's zoning and planning board conference right in Saratoga here. And all the board attended, it was really good. We had some great speakers and really a good time to interact with some of those speakers and learn a lot more about the planning and zoning regulations that we have and a little bit more in depth on some areas that maybe we didn't have as much knowledge in. So we've all met our in-service continuing education requirements for 2020, which is great. That doesn't mean we won't have some more probably, but it was good to have that conference right off there. All right, next on the agenda is the meeting minutes. So our meeting minutes were last from January 23rd. Do we have any comments, questions, or alterations to this? There are motion to approve the meeting minutes as written?
I don't care, I'll make a motion if you drop it, so it's present.
I'll send a motion.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
And Mr. Clon?
Yes.
Mr. Smazna?
Yes.
Chairwoman Soder? Yes. Well, Mr. Manning is got called away on a family emergency, so he won't be sitting in tonight. Next on the agenda, we have time for public comment. We don't have any public hearings tonight, but we will open it for any public comment if anyone would like to speak at this time. You can just say your name, sorry.
Yeah, Brayout and 16 Oakwood Avenue. I'm actually here representing the emergency squad tonight. Just a question, I know in zoning laws, there are certain things that need to be followed as far as fire codes and things like that. Is there anything in the town codes that would allow the EMS organization to become involved in looking at plans and seeing whether there might be obstacles to getting people in and out in an emergency?
No, there shouldn't be any issue with that. We'd be glad to, on the planning level, I think more than zoning, when we get a larger project subdivision, we could include you as well as the fire company, which we do for fire company access, obviously, for the larger plans, but it wouldn't be a problem putting a pack together and getting it down to you guys.
Reason for that is with all the senior housing that is propping up in our town, which is great, we do get more calls. So if we have better access to the living quarters, it's just going to make everybody's job easier and make access, getting in and out quicker and everybody knows that a few minutes can make a...
Are you requiring in regards to access to the actual building itself or access roadwise?
Access to the elevator.
Elevator information and things like that.
Layouts and things like that.
Yeah, no, we can include you on our large subdivision, larger buildings.
As an example, one thing we've run into is when bedrooms in apartments, a lot of times when you go into the bedroom, there's a closet, you know, there's a space to the, you gotta go in and turn, and there's a closet right in front of you. You can't move that closet. And if you need to get a structure in there, it's nearly impossible, then we have to use other tools and it can delay things. Whereas if the closet was moved to the adjacent wall and used that for dressers or whatever, then dressers can be moved, chairs can be moved. So it would make access just a little bit easier. It's, you know, one of the things that we could do.
Yeah, feel free, feel free anytime yourself or send a representative for Community Hub, and we'll talk about it and we'll get information from you guys and we'll send you a packet when it goes to a plan. If we have any larger projects, not problem at all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Good suggestion, thank you. Anything else? Okay, the public comment section is now closed. Next on the agenda, we have an area variance. Howard Amash?
Amash.
Amash, okay. And it's 720 Burgoyne Avenue, 177.5-1-1. If you'd like to come up to the speaker over here?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I've never done this before.
That's all right. I'll walk you through it.
If I get in line, you just shut me down. My wife does.
All right, so you are here for an area variance?
Yes.
So first off, we'd like to understand exactly what relief you're looking for, okay? Just kind of explain, you know, in general terms, obviously, we have all the information, but in general terms, kind of what the situation is and what relief you're seeking, okay?
Maybe I can chime in first and help them out a little bit?
Good.
We were called out to the location, I don't have the actual date here, but we were called out for a complaint from a neighbor in regards to having his RV parked on the side of his house, in front of the front plane of the house. In our code, section 167-K, section K, it states in the RV storage that the recreational vehicle shall not exceed, extend beyond the front line of the primary dwelling or closer than 60 feet from the road, whichever is less. So on the site inspection, we noticed that the motor home is in front of the front plane of the home. We talked to Mr. Amash, which he was gracious enough, he's been very proactive through the whole process, he's, everything we've asked, he's done. And he's since moved the motor home, which is a registered motor vehicle, to his driveway from the location that it was in. But, and hence, he wants to go before the board, ask for relief from that 60-foot or front setback from the house. He has put, as you see in the pictures, he has put a stone type driveway with retention on it. And again, right now, with parking there, he is in violation, but he's before the board to try to rectify that. We have been out there, and as you can see, you have several complaints which were issued by his neighbors and they're in writing, guys have to have his own.
Is it a 50-foot setback from the road?
It's 60 feet.
Five zero, correct?
Six zero.
That's the actual setback?
Yes. Or the front plane of the house. The 60-foot was put into the code for the R2 rural zone. Most of the houses there are at 50-foot setbacks from the right way, and that's why they say the front plane of the house. And in the R2, you have 150-foot setback, so it allows you to go with that vehicle 60 feet from the right way.
Just, I don't mean, you know, if you want to go along with the other stuff, I just want to make sure I understood, it looked like it was 45 foot from edge of pavement?
It's 45 foot from the edge of the pavement, 15, and 60 foot from the center of the road.
But just, so how far forward in the house is it?
You can see from the pictures, it's about half or a little over half of the RV is in front of the front plane of the house.
Like 20 feet from my house?
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to get, figure out that.
The other thing I notice too, that the gentleman, he's got it all stone, he's got, he's got pressure treated, lumber, 4x6s or 4x4s, whatever he uses, contained. Anything that was going to go off the RV is going to be contained in that stone, that stone area.
That area was a big sinkhole next to my house. And what it does is spill out the water and I cut it, but when I did the gravel, I found that my neighbor's roof drains, pipes come over and drain underneath on, into that hole. What I did was put 13 tons of gravel there and moved it around myself and leveled it off, as you say, 4x4s, topsoil, mulch on it, and it looks very attractive. I got pictures, you've probably got them there. And I tried to make it look attractive, and then he went out and spent $1,000 on a cupboard, the exact color of the house. So I did what I could to make it look good. We put it there because the other side of the house is impossible to put it.
Now, when you say impossible, what do you mean by that?
The other side of the house has a easement for, I believe, sewer and water, a 30-foot easement along the road. And I'd have to lay gravel and roll it about 140 feet on the easement to even get the RV back there. I drove, we had another RV that was weighed half as much, and I drove it back there and I had to have it towed out because it was too soft. I can't put a road on top of the easement.
You can, you would just need to move it if you needed to get to the easement.
Right, which would be, you know, like in the middle of the wintertime.
So you're saying that from the front, looking at the front of your house, you couldn't drive the RV up the side?
It weighs too much, and it would only be 15 foot from the road, which is a lot worse than 45 feet. It would be 15 foot from the main road.
I have a drawing in front of me, and it shows a tree in the back of the RV.
Yes.
Is that, is that a tree that, I'm not, I'm not against anything about trees, but is that, is that a tree that could possibly cut down and could move the RV back that much further?
Okay, that's a 50-foot red maple. It's the nicest tree on my property and it shades the deck and kitchen, but looking at it, I could cut all the lower branches off and move the RV back another 10 to 12 feet. And because there's nowhere else to put it, if I had to, I would take that tree down and go right up to the fence, but it would still be a few feet from the front of the house. But I would do whatever it takes.
Yeah, I don't want you to go cut the female or anything like that.
Well, you know, whatever it is.
Metachair too, on the Grand Avenue side, as you see here where the easement is located on your map, you would have to get a curb cut from the town, seeing it would be a town road, and it is awful wet over in there in the back section, so it would be, it would be a challenge for him to establish a road, come off Grand Avenue if the town. And the other, the other issue that he might have is site distance for cutting a curve there, he's right at an intersection with his house. So he would probably have a challenge as well to get a clearance from DPW with site distance to put a road cut, curb cut in to establish a driveway on the side.
Now, both from where it's parked currently in the driveway, is that, is that an issue as far as from the code?
In the code standpoint, when it's in the storage mode, if it's registered, registered motor vehicle and it's functioning and moving, it's considered a registered motor vehicle and we have no jurisdiction over it. If it was unregistered and in the driveway, yes, it would be an unregistered motor vehicle. Hence, in the code, under section K of 167, as you can see, I think everybody has a copy of it, it's the storage part of it, winter storage.
So the simple answer is that, as the applicant claims before the board now?
He's not in violation.
Unlike when he filed the application, he was not in compliance, but now he's in compliance.
Correct.
Could I mention that, we're 70 years old, we're about to retire, and we bought that to use, we've had it 11 months and we've put 12,000 miles on it. So it doesn't sit there that much. We have children in South Carolina, Tennessee, Florida, and it doesn't stay there that much, but it's just there for the storage in the winter, and maybe next year, it might not be there for that, depending, God willing.
So you've had the RV for about a year?
11 months.
Did you have another RV before that?
We had a lighter one that was smaller than that and lighter, and that's the one we drove across the other side.
The easement, the easement side.
And it got caught there, we had to have it towed out. It was just too heavy to go back in there, and that was half the weight.
Then after that, when that happened, did you move it forward to this other side?
The other one, we traded it in.
I'm just trying to establish...
We used it and then we traded it in.
I'm just trying to establish myself, how long you've had the RV and how long the RV's been in the yard, you know, on that property, for whatever duration it's been there.
Yeah, all this has been, the new one's been there 11 months, and the other one was there two years. And we've had, I've talked to my closest neighbors behind me, on one side of me and on the other side of the other neighbor, and none of them have any problem with it. I just have one neighbor that has a problem, and what I was doing, the husband came over and spent the time of day and talked to me, never had a complaint. And we did it in September, and they complained in January.
How far back is that shed that's behind your RV? I assume it's behind the fence rim area?
The shed?
Yes.
That's way in the backyard.
Would there be a way, I know there's a fence obviously in the way, but is there a way to open up the fence and have the RV all the way as far back as you, basically as far back as you go? Obviously, the tree is in the way of that.
I'd have to take the tree down, part of the deck, my wife's gardens out, and that goes downhill back there.
Bill? I just want to understand the code a little bit.
Sure.
But it says here, covered at all times. I see that you got this mushroom thing over there, whatever you want to call it. Is that what they're talking about?
Pretty much, they wanted to, the intent, I believe, again, I'm speaking...
You got covered on the roof, you know, a roof is covered. I'm just trying to understand if there's any kind of language or is there anything that tells us what that really means?
I don't know that there's a definition.
I don't think there's a definition for cover. The cover is...
I have the metrics here.
Oh, okay.
That's why I call it a mushroom.
The cover.
Okay, and I just have a couple other questions, if you don't mind. It seems like there's, you know, whatever happens here is going to be inexpensive. Maybe, you know, I don't know, I don't know where we're going with this, but maybe there's going to be, you know, if you move it back or cut down trees or whatever happens with it. What people, I don't know anything about RVs, I'm sorry. Other places, obviously, you don't go sit in it when it's sitting there.
No.
So there are places where, you know, like people that have tractor trailers, they park the tractor trail somewhere, get in their car and drive home, is that something that's done? I don't know.
There are buildings where they store RVs, yes.
There is. Is that like really expensive?
Yes, yes.
Like how much?
$25 to $50 a foot.
A what?
A foot.
A year?
A foot.
No, I get that per year or...
32 feet longs. For the what, for the winter months.
So you're talking, this what, 50 feet long?
Ah, 32 feet long. 32 feet long.
32, so about a thousand bucks?
I guess so.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about. I'm just trying to get, you know, look at all the different...
If you look at the picture here, that one tree, I mean, if he, worst case, if he...
I planned to go out there and physically see it, I saw the thing where you had moved it, but I figured, I wanted to hear what you had to say. But you want to have all the options in your head as you're walking around.
Yeah, it's only there for the bad months in the wintertime, and like I said, might not be there next winter, but I...
Well, we got the old ones now.
Yeah, I made, I made use of the sinkhole there, and made a nice area for it.
That's not retention pond wood?
It is not. The property actually drains backwards if, like Mr. Amash was saying, it pitches back to a shed, which the neighbor hinted to, and just to give you a little clearance on the shed issue that was listed into one, the shed was an existing shed from 1993, the house was built, the shed was built prior to our accessory structure. I look back in zoning, in the previous zoning books, and there was no accessory structure setback when the shed was built. Mr. Amash, a few years back, we got a call from, I believe the same neighbor, to go out for a complaint of, he fixed it up, put a new roof and siding on it, but he didn't move it, move the structure or anything. And we went out there, we talked to him then, and he was not in violation of anything. But the neighbor, again, highlighted that, as you can see in the...
Lucky you.
And again, the neighbor was just concerned, it was a concern of the neighbor, and we addressed it, and Mr. Amash has been, yeah, he's been upright and forth with the building department always.
Well, I could take, like I say, I could cut all the lower branches of that red maple. Oh, hey, move it back another 10, 10 foot or something.
Be closer to that.
Now, do you, do you have any sort of neighborhood rules or homeowner?
No.
Anything like that?
There's no association, no problem in that. Pretty much everybody keeps to themselves. We look well with our neighbors.
Can I just ask you, I'm sorry, just to clarify that, when you say you have no association, I understand that, appreciate that, there's no homeowners association. Do you know offhand whether or not your neighborhood is subject to what's called typically declarations of covenants and restrictions?
I wouldn't even know what that is, I'm sorry.
Sometimes they restrict, for instance, a commercial vehicle, boats, they restrict sheds, things like that.
Did you just cover it under our Part 1 district zoning earlier on?
Anytime I have a question, I come here to the town and ask, like when I fixed up the shed, I had a question, do I need a building permit? I come to the town, anytime there's a complaint, I came to the town and said, what do we...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I could mention that probably about five houses down to the other side of the street, there was an RV, larger than mine, on the side of the house, for the past 10 years, sticking out, with no complaint, they blacktopped that spot. On my way here, down to Island Street, and I've gone by three RVs, and there's no problem with them. I don't care what anybody else does, I just have to take care of my own problem.
Thank you. What I, what I like to do, and everyone on the board knows this now, I like to just go over the area variance criteria, so just so everyone knows, just a good reminder as we kind of seek to understand kind of what's going on here and for any future area variance actions, as we make a decision on this particular action. So, in its consideration of the area variance, the Board of Appeals shall take into account the benefit to the applicant, the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the Board of Appeals shall also consider, A, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance; B, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some, some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance; C, whether the requested area variance is substantial; D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district; and E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. The Board of Appeals, in the granting of area variances, shall grant the minimum variance, that it shall deem necessary and adequate, and at the same time preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and health of the community. So that's just from, that's just from our code, so good reminder on that. You're all set as far as talking, so what was it, we're just going to do a little housekeeping right now. So first, I need a motion to declare the ZBA the lead agent for seeker, and this is a type 2 action, which is exempt from seeker and further environmental review. Want the language? It doesn't have to be any...
It is just exempt, you can just make that determination, it's exempt, you don't have to be a lead agent.
Okay, all right.
For a type 2.
Okay. So we can just have a motion for that?
Yeah, and it is, it's exempt.
Okay, all right. So do we need to...
You don't, you don't.
Okay, all right. Okay, excellent. So next, we'll have to set a motion for the public hearing, which will be next month, which will be Thursday, March 26th, okay? And that will be at 7:05, so we give ourselves a little, little bit of time there. But so next month, just so you're aware, we'll come back, your neighbors, whoever wants to come, will be able to come and talk and speak in regards to this action. So can I get a motion for that, please?
I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Clon?
Yes.
Mr. Smazna?
Yes.
Chairwoman Soder? Yes. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Amash, for coming, and we'll see you next month, okay? You're welcome to stay, I'm not taking you.
Oh, no, no. More important business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the use variance for Boyhaven Muntzer property, 3430 Boyhaven Road, 162-1-14.1. So first off, just to give a little background, yes, and then I'll let you speak. So this is, as I stated, is a use variance, it has come before the planning board for minor subdivision and special use permit as well. They were proposing a subdivision of the 69 acres of the Boyhaven parcel involving the two ponds and most of the premises that the building's on, for the purposes of conveying the parcel to a corporation for the operation of a youth summer camp. In addition to this requiring a minor subdivision approval, it is also a use in the R2 zoning district that requires a special use permit and site plan approval. Finally, there was some definition conflict in our zoning code regarding camps, dwelling units, and family, which have caused this proposed use in construction of bunk cabins to obtain the use variance from ZBA. So with that said, the planning board has taken lead agency on this application as far as the seeker goes, so that has been completed, they were declared an unlisted, this was declared an unlisted action as well as, as the ones that were before them as well. So without further ado.
All right. So, I mean, code enforcement officer can probably read out on this as well, and you can follow them.
Metachair.
Yes.
The applicant was before the planning board with some issues and then sent, kicked down to you guys for interpretation of parts of our code in the definition section of camp. There was a question in the definition of camp, the question in dwelling unit and family in the camp definition. The definition of family, as you can read, pretty clearly states in the second part of it, that an individual in the, in the structure, such as a camp house, or running, running the unit, in charge of the unit. I think that's, to me, was pretty clear as the intent of the seasonal structures which the applicant's looking to put onto the property, they're looking to have four bunk units with 12 beds in each unit, six... They're looking to have four bunk units with twelve beds in each unit, six bunk units, in a seasonal structure. I believe the big, with talking to council, the definition of dwelling unit is more of a, of a permanent structure, habitable structure, and I think what the applicant is looking for is a seasonal type structure. I, myself and council have talked back and forth on it, and, and I guess the variance is basically for the definition explanation. In my, my opinion, our definition of camp is a little different than what you have in the packet for the state's definition. I think the state's definition is a little, a little more what the average person would describe a camp as. And again, it kicks you back to the dwelling unit when you read our code, and our dwelling unit definition is more of a permanent structure. So I think there's just that gray area that they want to clarify for the applicant in, in order to process his planning board application. Do you have anything else, council, that you could add to that?
I don't know that I do, other than just to try to help the board, sorry, focus. The specific subsection that I understand the applicant, who I think have appropriately raised as a question, is within section one eighty dash four two, and then it's subsection A, and then it's subpart, I apologize, two, that states such cabins or cottages shall be designed for one family only, with not more than two such dwelling units permitted per gross acre, i.e. a maximum gross density of two dwelling units per acre. And, and I think respectfully, I can't speak for the applicant, but as I understand it, you can't reconcile that definition with both the past use of the property and then the present contemplated, contemplated use in the present for the future.
You know, I think that's where code enforcement officers really found discrepancy in use versus the way the town code is written. You know, there's not a clear way to define our use against what the town code is, what comes to.
And it's really odd in that it's under the definition of camp, which the proposed use is more consistent with the camp to some extent than the definition.
So when the, I mean, to take this to the next level, when the camp operators and the code compliance interpreter, called our intact, looked at the DOH code, New York State Department of Health. New York State Department of Health, after the CO was issued, is the governing agent of the camp from here on. The water, waste, bed count, and overall operation. So the Department of Health will annually, or semi-annually, obviously check to make sure that the camp is in compliance with everything, like they do in restaurants, elderly homes and whatnot. So code compliance, the main check, since there was some discrepancy in the town code, is to make sure that when it gets farther down the line, it will be in compliance with the state rules for camp operation.
Right, the, the camp is subject to fire safety inspections through the, through the town code enforcement office on an annual basis, along with documentation from the New York State Health Department. For water, they monitor the water sewer, water and sewer, you'll have to have a water professional on, on staff, which will do a, a monthly or weekly water testing while the camp is in use yearly, whenever the camp is in use, and submit records to the Department of Health. And again, I'd like to refer everybody on the board to the New York State definition of the camp, which I think was issued to everyone. It, it's definitely a, a clear, a clear vision in my mind to what a seasonal camp structure would, how it would operate. Ours is a little vague, I think of the interpretation, it's just a, again, a mental interpretation of a seasonal as compared to a, a structure, and our, and our dwelling unit is more to a habitable space, I think.
And, I mean, when it comes to the density, I don't know if you have this map, but the size of the parcel versus the number of what you even consider dwelling is very limited. It's not like the increase in the density to a dwelling. Anything being construed as high density, this is still extremely low density. I mean, it's, the, the reasoning behind these new, and this is a, basically just a cabin. It's an uninsulated, unfinished bunkhouse. When the Boy Scouts used the camp, they probably had people housed in lean tubes and things of that nature, which the types of campers that will be using this might want to have more of a closed door, overnight dwelling than some of the ways that the Boy Scouts ran it. So it'll just be a little more up to date with what people would consider an overnight camp for kids at this point, so.
And Madam Chair, I, the, Mr. Muntar, the applicant submitted plan, a preliminary set of plans for the, it's a twenty-four by twenty-four, as Mr. Muntar said, twenty-four by twenty-four seasonal structure, no insulation, no sheet rock, but it, it is proposing electric with smoke, carbon monoxide detectors and emergency lighting to meet the fire code. So it is a base structure, not a habitable dwelling, that you could, it's a seasonal from April to whatever, whatever the guidelines that the planning board puts in effect for weather permitting structure that they're proposing.
I definitely appreciate you coming kind of before us and addressing, kind of self-addressing this, this issue with the code.
My dad is the one that's really involved with the camp people, and myself and my siblings send them to Florida for a few weeks a year, so that's our vacation. So I'm here basically representing my dad, but, you know, this, this camp group that he's connected with, it's based out of Rochester, that has another facility similar to this out in that region, wants to operate this. They're great people, I think that they'll do a phenomenal job reinvigorating that camp and hopefully getting numerous young adults per year away from phones and wifi and video games and all of that good stuff, to, you know, fishing poles and mosquito bites and bow and arrows and things of that nature, rather than, you know, shooting somebody on a video game screen, so. But it's a, in their opinion, you know, it was their choice to want to add these structures as the operators, and with the group sizes that they want to have, with the number of counselors and the amount of beds that exist, they really needed to have some more facilities to be able to make the numbers work, you know, so. To them, would the numbers work without these extra beds? Probably, you know, maybe not, we haven't really talked about that. But most chances are, they'd say, this really wouldn't be enough facilities for us with what's presently there. Some of the stuff that's presently there is on the fringe of really not being that usable, some of the lean tubes and things of that nature. You're probably not gonna get a kid as modern as today to want to go sleep in that lean tube, whereas the Boy Scouts would have years ago. So, you know, just the evolution of things and how to make this really be a success when it opens is the reasoning behind adding these structures.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm glad you pointed that out, because one of the, the things that we look at for the use variance is reasonable return, cannot realize a reasonable return, so appreciate the point, you know, the point about that, because obviously, at some point, you have to have a, you know, making money and not losing money to.
Exactly, I mean, hardship is, is the term, right? So, you know, their, their numbers have to be great enough to be able to pay their insurance and all their counselors and themselves and whatnot to keep the place open. It's not gonna be an inexpensive place to run and maintain, so they need to really have a decent couch in the short season that we have here, so.
Madam Chair? You know, I, I read through this, I think what your family's doing is phenomenal.
I, I can't take any crap from that.
Well.
That's my dad.
Yeah, I know, I, I next to him a couple meetings, you know, you can pass that on, alright? But, but I'm trying to synthesize down, you know, I'm looking at definitions and I'm looking at this, looking at that. Is it possible? Mr. Attorney? To, or built, to, to just synthesize this down, you know, instead of like looking at definitions of camp and things? Let me see, I just want to make sure that I got it, okay? You, you need our permission to build a few more buildings, or a building or two? So, and, and we have to say that these buildings are gonna be for kids and not for family? Is that one of the issues?
I, no, not really, I just.
I'm just trying to get.
The definition of a dwelling unit, I think, is the, the thing that sticks out in the code. It, it states habitable structure with amenities and whatnot, which is a more year-round atmosphere, whereas they're asking for something that, a dwelling unit, our dwelling unit definition doesn't describe what they're, what they're putting forth to the planning board, and they're looking just for the clarity on that. I think they're, they're asking for something that is not year-round habitation, it's a seasonal product that's just for their camps, their kids to come and enjoy the summer and, and operate from a set date, which I'm sure the planning board will, will put dates of operation on the, on the.
On the table.
And, and that, that'll cover the ranges for them to stay in. The, the structures that they're building will meet fire code, will meet safety, fire safety codes, but they're not to be habited off-season, you know, in winter months.
I get that, I, I'd probably, please forgive me, I don't think I was clear. The remedy of the applicant, what exactly, you know, if you could encapsulate it down to a couple of sentences, not, you know, is it, we have to give you permission to build something we don't already have in our rules? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to figure out what the issue is before us, I guess.
What relief you're seeking, yes?
Yeah, kinda, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at all this.
Relief from a definition, I guess, would be the.
We have to rewrite the zoning law, is that it, or?
Or give an interpretation of dwelling unit.
And that, that's part of the problem, is that I think in this applicant's instance, they've identified a circumstance, and I think rightfully so, where it's not a matter of interpreting that section, because the definitions that we've all laid out in terms of dwelling unit and the definition of family, by the way, all of these definitions illustrate a conflict, and are, are in essence in opposite of the intended use and of their proposed project. And it may sound odd to you, because these conflicts all occur within, under the subheading of camp. So they're sort of completely in opposite of what you think of camp. And so the applicant's stuck with these restrictive definitions that do not permit that multi-bunked, not, multi-bunked seasonal unit.
Were they use variants, is that what we're basically saying?
That's right.
Yes.
Not really a clear definition in the.
Yeah, I get that, I'm just trying to think of what the remedy is. I, I just want to see if we decide, yeah, we want to go ahead with this, what do we have to focus on? I'm just trying to narrow it down.
The focus will be ultimately to define and describe the exact use that you're now getting the presentation on.
So we would say a use variance that would include these things?
Correct, and ironically.
That makes it a lot simpler for me, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, I, because, believe me, when this guy handed it to me. A lot of boards for a lot of different purposes. When this guy handed it to me, I was sitting there going, alright, wait a minute.
Okay, so I'm now.
It's bizarre because we're proceeding under the right section, and it's camp, but camp's not defined.
No, I get it, I get it.
I have a feeling when the code, when the code writer got to camp, they were probably pretty tired and said, you think we're gonna need to really do much with that? Nah, let's just keep going.
Once you got to already, they don't worry about it.
Right, yeah. I, I, what I'm understanding, you know, in the Adirondacks, I know there's different campgrounds and campsites, and they have the same type of dwelling, what you're talking about, you know? I, I know this for a fact, because I, I've been at one of those facilities, okay? And their, their house, there's, you know, there's no insulation or anything. They have electric, they have the smoke detectors and everything else in there that they do. And some are even older, they were built way back when, but some are newer now, the state has updated those facilities, okay? There's just a plain structure, and they're open from this date to that date, and in the winter they're shut down. And it's, it's pretty much cut and dry. Like I say, I, from what I hear, what you want to do and what Bill is explaining, I think is. Yeah, I mean, the whole facility of this renovation has to be brought to code. There's not a single part of it that will be in use that won't be compliant with code.
Right.
They get, you know, everything that was there that wasn't compliant under the old use is now being renewed to be code compliant, so, you know, but that goes deeper than the board. And at the Board of Health level, it's actually harder than these guys, because they're the ones that are, you know, fire code stuff and everything, technically is pretty easy. Comes down to making sure no one's gonna get ill from an invisible bug in water, that's a different story, so. You, you almost have like EDC problems. Yeah, that type of thing, yeah. Like I say, they have their people that come out and inspect these facilities, like Bill was saying, I, I think it's usually, they do it seasonal, they inspect them in the beginning of the season, then they might come back during halfway through the season or at the end of the season, but they do, they do make very, uh, checks.
Any other questions, Mr. Curry? Okay. Next we have to look at a, a public hearing. Had some discussions with, with planning board, with John Barto, as well as Bill Henry, our counsel. And we felt it was wise and probably prudent to have a separate public hearing to keep things kind of clean and straightforward, because obviously this action is, I feel like, a little bit more straightforward than, than the ones before the planning board. We don't want to muddy, muddy things up at all. So we're going to have a separate one, they're only a week apart, so it shouldn't, you know, delay anything as far as that goes. I think probably have more from the planning perspective to kind of look at, so. Can I get a motion to schedule the, the public hearing for this action? It will be, since we have one prior to that, will be at seven thirty or thereafter on March twenty-sixth. Can I get a motion for that, please?
So.
Second motion.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Kuller?
Yes.
Mr. Smazal?
Yes.
Chair Williams, somebody?
Yes, thank you. Okay, and that is it for tonight, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll say yes.
So Eric stole Meg's thunder, because Meg's.
I'm sorry.
Her question is, so tell me exactly.